And welcome to the regular meeting for the Daily City Library Board of Trustees for April twenty 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 one. Before we start our meeting, I'll go ahead and read the COVID nineteen announcement for public meetings pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N twenty nine twenty. Members of the Daily City Library Board and staff will participate in this evening via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via live stream. There are two ways to submit public comments: send written comments by three P M on meeting date, and register to speak at the meeting via Zoom. To submit a comment in writing, please email libraryboard@deallycity.org and write public comment in the subject line. In the body of the email include the item number and/or title of the item, as well as your comments. All comments received by three P M will be emailed to the library board members and included as an add to packet on the city's website prior to the meeting. Those comments received after three P M will be added to the record and shared with the library board members for the public meeting. Comments are not read aloud into record. To speak at the meeting, you must register via Zoom. The city requests that you complete your registration by three P M on the meeting date. After registering, you will receive confirmation email containing instructions on how to join the meeting, including a unique link. Your address and email will not be disclosed to the public. Public comment is limited to two minutes maximum. To register to speak at the meeting via Zoom, visit, I'm not gonna read that, you will familiarize yourself with Zoom prior to joining the meeting. When you would like to speak on an item during public comment portion of the meeting, you will need to use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The city will not be providing technical support. If you do not wish to speak, the city requests that you watch the live stream of the meeting on the city's virtual website. Persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in the meeting should call the office of the city clerk as soon as possible. Alright, I call this meeting to order. Should we go ahead and say the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, President Logarta.
Present.
Vice President Faupoua.
She is present. She is muted. Trustee Dos.
Present.
And trustee Santos.
Present.
And I apologize in advance, I'm having audio difficulties on my end. Please forgive me.
Thank you. But I hope everyone's had an opportunity to review tonight's agenda. If there are no updates, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. And for the minutes from our last meeting on February sixteen twenty twenty one, is there a motion to move?
A motion?
Any second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. May we have the directors' report, please?
Sure. Sorry for the ambient noise. So, the first item is our reopening plan. And I'm gonna share my screen. I have a presentation. Can everyone see it? I see affirmative. So, a lot of this will be deja vu all over again. We've had a plan in place for quite some time. The big exciting news is that we now have a date to put on it. So, our date is May tenth. So, it's fast approaching. I, just to give you some context, some of our neighboring libraries, most significantly the San Mateo County Library, they're opening a little later this month. The San Bruno Library also opening this month. And then next month, along with us, we will have the Redwood City and the San Mateo Public Library. And then Burlingame will be reopening probably in June and sometime after that. I'm in the park. And then I just got word today. Will be reopening also in May. So, we're in the stream of people reopening. And, no, let's try that again. There we go. Okay, technical difficulties. So, as I said, deja vu all over again. We are very careful about our safety measures, our COVID safety measures. All the staff have been trained and are extremely diligent. Face coverings are worn at all times and workstations are being sanitized before and after use. We have bottles of hand sanitizer everywhere, as well as gloves that are used when handling materials that are returned. And of course, there's a lot of hand washing. We're still quarantining items, although it's for a shortage for a period of time. We're quarantining items for forty-eight hours. And potentially based on the recommendations of our county health officer, we might be changing that in the future. We have our nice hygiene panels on our service desk and hand sanitizer stations about the library. A lot of signs are being put up to remind people about all the things we all know about physical distancing, masks, and hand sanitizing or washing. And we are removing, as I said, temporarily, most or all of the seating for this first phase of reopening. And we're closing our small spaces that we don't feel would have adequate air exchange. There. And then once, once we are open to the public, we'll continue with the wiping down of things, of course. But custodial staff will come in, in addition to the one they usually clean, which is after hours, they'll be coming in midday as well. And again, the wipes, the masks, the hand sanitizer, and hand washing is available to library visitors at that time, as well as staff. We are limiting the occupancy at this first stage, just to make sure that we don't have issues with physical distancing. And also related to that, the bathrooms, we're gonna limit to one person at a time because they are quite small spaces. And then I believe it was this group that suggested that we designate an open hour for seniors and at-risk residents. So, we'll be doing that, of course. Library visitors are gonna be asked to not come in if they don't feel well. They are going to be required to wear a face covering the whole time that they're in the library and to maintain physical distancing. We are branding this library express, which is what the county is also doing. I don't know if you've seen, some of the other libraries have branded it. I think San Bruno Library is grab and go, and San Francisco Public Library was browse and bounce. So, very catchy. But the idea behind it is that you come in, conduct your business, and then leave so someone else can come in. And then, of course, following in to the staff, very important. Services that will be provided in person, the one item on this that is currently being provided in person is that walk-up pickup. So, we're gonna continue that. But browsing is a huge one that people have been asking for, and I think that's gonna be a lot of the use. They'll be able to check out, check themselves out at the self-check or get service at the front desk. We'll provide reading recommendations, information, or reference sources. They'll be able to deal with any matters that come up related to their library account. They'll be able to return items. They will be able to use the public computers, which is a big one, I'll talk a little bit later. And mobile printing, which is actually currently available, will also be available to people within the library and the Wi-Fi. Things that we're gonna continue to do remotely, at least for this next phase, is pretty much pretty much all of our public programs, the storytimes, the class visits, trivia nights, you know, game programs, family programs. Um, the internet and computer tutoring and assistance that we provide. More extensive reading recommendations or intensive research assistance that takes a longer period of time, we're gonna do via email or some other method. Um, mail delivery service, which is, of course, by its nature, a remote service. And then we'll continue with three D printing being offered in the same way that it that it is now for the time being. Um, services that will still be temporarily available, um, this, as I mentioned, the the small rooms, which is the silent study room, will be closed and then the community room will also not be available um, for this first phase of reopening. All the toys and manipulatives in addition to the seating are temporarily removed, um, just for safety because um, you know, the kids won't necessarily be as cognizant of not touching something that might have been touched by someone else. We just want to remove that temptation temporarily. Um, for the same reason, the early literacy computers, the book sales and free carts are gonna roll away for a little while. Our after-school ID lab and zone activities, we're all in-person programs that are gonna resume at a later date. And then group visits, which is typically either from schools or sometimes from special day or um, other kinds of um, group, group homes. Um, and then also accepting materials donations, so books and DVDs that people wanna donate, um, they will have to wait for the next date for that as well. And um, so what would your library be, visit be like? Uh, we, each library is gonna have a max, maximum capacity, which is set based on the layout and available staffing. Um, so we'll be counting people at the front door. Um, we don't wanna separate families, so we're kind of treating a a small family group as a single individual because there's enough leeway in the capacity for that. Um, children under ten must be accompanied by an adult, um, a parent or caregiver. Um, the, the, the current policy, um, children under ten can't be unaccompanied, but frequently they are accompanied by an older sibling. But because of the nature of of the safety precautions that need to be in place, um, for this time, they will need to be accompanied by an adult and under their supervision. Um, and then the capacity I mentioned, um, these are the the numbers for this first phase. Um, we hope as things continue to improve, that these numbers will either go up or possibly away entirely. Um, they're based, as I mentioned, um, not, not, not on the capacity set by the fire inspector, but on staff kind of looking at the layout of the facility and knowing that people don't evenly disperse and we don't wanna have issues with people not being able to social distance. So they're gonna congregate in certain areas of the service desk and the children's area. Um, you know, by the DVDs and the, in the computer lab. So we have a a general number for browsing and then the computers have a certain, there's a capacity based on the number of available computers. So hopefully, some of the time, you know, people won't have to wait at all, but during busy times, they'll, they'll have to wait for somebody to, to, to come in, get their items and and make room for someone else. And computer use, as um, this is as, as it was described previously, um, we have limited the number of computers because the furniture is is just such that, um, there's no way to space it out. Um, so we had to remove computers to allow for that six feet of distance between users. We're covering the mice and the keyboards with the cover. There's going to be a, um, a wipe dispenser right there for people to wipe for themselves. And of course, we'll be doing it midday and and before and after we open. Um, and then um, computer assistance, which is a huge portion of what the library does provide for our computer users. Um, they come up with questions about the website they're using, how to format something to print, that sort of thing. And we're, we're gonna be providing that service at the front desk, which makes it um, not the level of service that I I think we would have preferred, but we wanna make sure that we're maintaining that distance. Um, and we can also help people, they can call even from the computer lab. And then the midday intercession, as I mentioned, um, we're gonna close, it's actually gonna be an hour and a half. Um, we're gonna close to allow time for for staff to do the cleaning and any kind of um, other facility prep they need to do. All of our visitors will leave, um, and then the staff will have their, they have an hour lunch break that they will take so that we don't have to worry about, you know, staggering lunches. Curb side, as I mentioned, we're gonna continue, we're, we're betting that demand will decrease substantially. Um, and so that we'll be able to do that. In the previous plan, we, um, we're gonna have times dedicated to curb side and times for open. And we really wanted to maximize um, our open time. So this is, this is the approach that we hopefully um, make that the computers more accessible and browsing to make that more accessible, have more times for that. Um, so people who do wanna continue to pick their stuff up at the front door can do it, but they're gonna have to give us a call in advance. And then someone will just bring it to the front door. And then the mail delivery service, we will continue to offer. Now that we have curb side, it it dropped dramatically and it, it's primarily older patrons. And we wanna be able to continue offering that as long as, as we can. And then this is the big one, this is our proposed schedule. You'll see the asterisk um, is indicating an hour um, morning time that we are proposing dedicating to older seniors, senior visitors or visitors who have health concerns. Um, and you'll see that that intersection usually starts at around twelve thirty. On Wednesdays at ceremony, it's a later day. And um, we wanted to make sure we had some evening hours and um, so it staggered a little bit. And then you'll see that we do have um, Saturday hours at the West End Library. That is the plan and we are all very busy getting ready. Um, I was moving things around today and I will probably continue doing that, making sure all our signs are up and everything. So we're, we're excited to welcome people back into the libraries. We've, we've missed them. And I know they've missed us. People have been asking, especially because our neighboring libraries are getting ready to open as well.
So May tenth for the day.
May tenth.
Um, I just have to ask how your staff is feeling, any angst with reopening? Um, you know, you, you guys are gonna be in the public again. Um, you know, we, you know, we've been um, in COVID for like over a year, so they've been, they have a new culture that they're following. Um, and so, yeah, how are you all feeling?
Yeah, I think, I think people are definitely excited but a little nervous. Um, we've, we've met and discussed this um, quite, quite a few times and and, you know, everyone had an opportunity to kind of shape the plan um, a little bit. I, I would say, I mean, I think everybody's ready. Um, we, we particularly wanted to wait um, until everyone had the opportunity to complete their vaccination cycle. Um, library staff were very fortunate um, to have been uh, included in the round with educators. So we were able to do that just a little bit earlier than but everyone else, which seems to be our current um, group of people getting vaccinated. So everyone's had that opportunity, um, and we put a lot of safety measures in place, so, so people are pretty confident about it. I, the other thing is, um, we know that this is just one stage. And so if something isn't working, we will definitely make adjustments. Um, I think the biggest fear that people have is if somebody, you know, is gonna make us think about mask wearing. But we are a public facility, um, and the public has always come in and then there are, you know, it's a very small minority of people, but somebody will always, you know, create some kind of issue. Um, and so we, we just wanna, we wanna make sure that the staff feels safe and that the other patrons also feel safe.
Um, are you all at, um, implementing anything like, um, requiring like COVID tests to be done weekly or anything like that?
We are not, the, the city has, um, has a safety plan in place that includes um, kind of a, a self-evaluation before each shift. Um, so, so staff do, you know, obviously will not come in if they are feeling ill and they all, including the hourly staff, do have paid sick leave so that they, they have that option if they need it. But yeah, we, we are not doing like temperature scanning or or testing at all. If somebody does, has any of the symptoms on the staff, then they're just directed to stay home.
Thank you, Sheila. Any other questions?
Is there anything that, um, like we could do with the help of reopening?
You know, um, we wanna get the word out as, as big and wide as we can. This is always a challenge um, for us when we change something like our hours. Um, because if we announce it too soon, um, it, sometimes, you know, people get confused as to when it's, when it's effective. Um, but I think helping us promote this, we intend to put this information um, on the website. Um, either this week or next week, and then we'll generate some social media um, posts. And if you wouldn't mind sharing those, that would be a, a really a good help in letting people know um, that, that we're opening our doors again. Because, yeah, it's been so long and I, I hope people haven't, haven't forgotten how wonderful their library is.
No, I think people miss the library, Sheila. Um, I, my one question is, um, did you all get a chance to get some feedback from community stakeholders, like young people, any of the patrons who are coming in person around? Just like what will make them feel safe to come back?
Um, so we, we do get a lot of feedback from, um, the people who reach out to us, which is probably not primarily young people, although I, I do, college-age people have been calling. And one of the things that they would like is, is a place to sit and study, which we're not able to provide um, in this, you know, right now, but is definitely something that in the next stage, that's, that's what we wanna add. Um, but we haven't had any like public meetings or anything like that. We're, we're basically basing it on, um, you know, all of the recommendations from, from state and county health agencies and um, making sure we're compliant with the city's um, safety recommendations as well.
Yeah, I think something that comes up for me around that pillow that could be helpful, I think, especially to inform why you all are thinking of rolling up programming or even just like the scheduling, um, as you come to returning back in person. Um, I've seen other folks, like, in some of like the district work that I do, kind of put, hand out like surveys and stuff like that. And I think if like library staff have some capacity to create just like a community response survey, I, I would definitely be down to like share that out, um, if that would, if it would be helpful to inform, just like from the community, different
I'm sorry, I'm having a, a little bit of a hard time hearing you. Um, I, I understand you're suggesting a survey. What was the survey topic?
Yeah, I think just like to get more feedback from the community, if there's opportunity to just maybe do like an online survey or something to help inform like what would make community members feel safer to go back into the libraries. If that's something that would be helpful for you all, but um, just something that's coming up to mind for me.
We, we, it's definitely something we can do. Um, the, the online surveys haven't um, always gotten a huge response, but we, I mean, we have, you know, Survey Monkey and and it is, it's actually neat, the way that it kind of pulls in the feedback and you can see a chart of it. But yeah, no, that's something we can do.
Yeah, yeah, I, I hear that. I also know like surveys also kind of depend on how, how well we can get it out. Um, and I think if that's something that would feel helpful to you all, I would definitely like encourage us here to support, to get community feedback. But I just think like decisions just feel a lot better for the community when they feel like they've had a say in it.
Mm-hmm, definitely. Well, and, and it's unfortunately, or fortunately, it's self-selecting, right? People who feel safe will come in with these things in place, but people who don't won't necessarily say, if only you had done this thing. Thank you.
Yeah, I do think the survey is a pretty good idea, just to get feedback from the community. Um, so that'd be kind of cool to do and I would definitely um, take the survey and promote it as well.
So specifically around what would make them feel safe in the library?
Yeah.
And then it could be like periodic where, um, you know, you can ask patrons other things, like programs they'd like to see. Um, and then, you know, we would give like multiple, like, um, examples and then they would choose or and then maybe there could be like a comment section below, you know, feedback or anything else they'd like um, to kind of helpfulful content and um, gain more like usability with the libraries, so.
Yeah, we did, we did that very early on because we weren't, weren't sure, you know, how to go with programming online. Um, and we didn't get a lot of feedback, but I think as this has gone on, more people are looking for the information on our social media accounts, so it might be more successful now.
Well, great, thank you, Sheila. Um.
Is, is there any way we can find out, um?
Teresa, you're not that clear. Can you, um, say your comment again?
Is there any way we can find out if we, um, what questions will go on this survey?
Oh, I can, I can email it out before it's launched, sure.
Oh, you're muted, Teresa.
I'm sorry?
You are muted if you were speaking.
No, I think we should all decide on the questions to go on the Survey Monkey, if it's something that we want Sheila to do. I think we can be part of the survey to submit. You know, we can submit some questions that we wanted to say on the survey and then from there, then, um, we, Sheila, you will put it down, the survey. The, the questions that should be, um, and maybe universal question.
Yeah, we can definitely add that as an agenda item for us to work on, um, maybe come up with, um, you know, some questions, um, that you'd like to ask, um, and then bring that to our next meeting.
Okay, I'll put a note for, for agenda building.
Thank you. Any other last comments or questions? Alright.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so, um, you know, we, we missed last month, but, um, you know, we had a really great um, study session in January, um, where we spoke about our role, our trustees and over priorities that, you know, we kind of wanna focus on. Um, we talked a lot about the budget and, um, how we wanna provide guidance on, um, the budget once it's reviewed. Um, and how we were gonna advocate informally and in writing, um, on extended hours for Bay Shore and John Daly Library with, um, a push for an increase for one or two additional full-time staff. Um, and now that you're opening, I feel like we can actually, um, you know, bring this to life and kind of start working on it. Um, because this has been a topic even with the board before, right? And now that we're, um, understanding our roles and, you know, what we're capable of doing as board members. Um, my ask is maybe we can do another study session again. Um, would that be okay?
So, so I have a medium-sized, I guess, a short, um, medium-sized, um, kind of overview of the budget. And it, um, it does incorporate that feedback that you, that you guys have provided in the past. So I don't know if you wanna go over it and then decide your next steps from there?
Oh, sure. Yeah, that's a really good suggestion. Um, does, what are, what are your thoughts? Um, I'll turn it over to my trustees. You're not clear, Teresa. I'm so sorry.
Maybe try turning off your camera, sometimes that helps.
How are we doing?
Okay, let's see. What study session are we doing again? Just a curiosity question, please?
Just a follow-up study session. I, some, there's been some time that's passed since our last one in January. But, um, it, you know, as we're going over priorities and what we're really gonna wanna push for, um, and we can even do as it pertains to the budgeting, right? Um, so what, what Sheila suggested is maybe we go over the budget and then kind of collaborate after that. Um, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I have, I have something that, that will kind of speak to what, what is already in the works budget-wise. And then, yeah, you can decide what you wanna do as next step. What what is already in the works budget-wise and then, yeah, you can decide what you wanna do as next steps from that.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah, I'm good with that too. And Chela, you said you're gonna um you're gonna speak to the follow-up. When we were asking about the budgeting for our full-time staff, right?
Yeah, I have, yeah, I have like a, I have a little, I have a little PowerPoint I can I can show you.
So we can discuss that next meeting? We can go over that next meeting?
Oh, I have it now if you'd like to see it now.
Yeah, we we had actually planned to do the budget presentation last month, but. But so we have it ready to go and actually there's some really good. I think you're all really going to like, so.
All right.
We just planned to present it tonight and then have the discussion with you right afterwards um about feedback and next steps, so. So maybe we should just launch right into that PowerPoint.
Yeah, let's go ahead and launch right into that. Thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead and share it. It's gonna pop up on your screen. There we go. Library Budget Overview. Um so um. There you go. So if any of you have ever curled up with the City of Daly City's budget book. You will know that each department, and we are part of the Department of Library and Recreation Services. Has a mission statement for services included in that. Um and so it's always good to look back on that and um. Cause that that really is is the values around what we build the budget for. Uh so our mission as as a joint library and recreation um department is serving our neighborhoods and empowering generations. By bringing people together to foster community, lifelong learning and healthy lifestyles. And we our core services are promoting and fostering that lifelong learning and personal enrichment. Promoting youth scholastic achievement, academic skills. Um providing leisure, learning and cultural opportunities which promote play, healthy lifestyles and community engagement. And to prevent isolation and promote vibrancy of the senior and disabled adult communities specifically. And so um you know, we we support those citywide priorities around leisure services and even public safety. We're not police or fire, but you know, we do, as we always say, keep the kids off the street and provide for that community building. That helps um, you know, promote understanding and a sense of community. Um so hopefully combat some of the negative things that we're seeing. Um kind of rearing their head again in our society. And then um for budget outcomes, um our focus is to um. Make sure that we can support the goal of all children reading proficiency by third proficiently by third grade. Um maintain a diverse collection and a diverse high-quality collection of materials. And develop new innovative and year-round programs for all age levels. You've seen this before. We have four libraries, which I'm always surprised, sometimes surprises people. They don't, people who live in Daly City didn't realize we have four wonderful libraries. Um as you can see, um some of them uh have much larger collections. I will say that all of them, all their shelves are full. So this is largely um really just related to their shelf capacity. Um the circulation is shaped a lot by the collection size as well as, you know, the hours open. So as you've identified in the past, you know, where there are fewer hours at John Daly and Bay Shore, unfortunately, there's fewer opportunities. For people to check out items. You will see that computer use is one of those things that um doesn't vary as much. And there's a lot of demand for computer use, particularly in the John Daly neighborhood. And um so we're just going over the actual budget itself. Um the budget is made up of revenues and expenditures. Um revenues for the library is not, that's not, we're not a main revenue generating um division, but um. We are mainly supported by the general fund. We're a general fund-supported division. To the tune of three point nine million dollars gift worth cake, so that is. The city provides the vast majority of our funding from the general fund. We do receive um a not insubstantial amount from the County of San Mateo and this is a contractual. Um a great arrangement that's existed before I started to provide services for the communities of Colma. And Broadmore so that they don't independently have to operate a library. We provide services for them, those people in those neighborhoods. Or in in those communities, excuse me.
Yes.
Yes. We also receive gifts and grants, um and we'll talk a little bit more about that, but we have um. The vast majority of those come from B C P L A and we have B C P L A's um wonderful executive director here today. Um we do um also take in um fines and fees. Um we're kind of looking at that a little bit, but the fines and fees are late fees um only charged uh to adult accounts. And then also something is lost or damaged. Moving into expenditures, which um are substantial, this just gives you an overview of the um. Categories of expenditures that we have and I'm gonna go in into depth um around each of these, but the biggest one. Is salaries and benefits, so we'll talk about that first. Um and then we also have mysterious fixed charges. Um services and supplies, which is very much a catch-all, and then program supplies, which is small.
Oh, but somebody else put it in a chart, a chat. So that person. Um Teresa, you're Teresa, you're unmuted for this meeting. Just letting you know.
Oh, is she? She's multitasking. Impressive. Um so as I said, I'm gonna go into each of these, but you can see like, starting with the big one, which is salaries and benefits. The big part of the salaries and benefits is the full-time. Because there's more benefits cost there as well as higher salaries. Um and this this does not look like an exciting slide, but it is in fact actually quite exciting to me. Uh you will see a column where you have um the number of current positions that we have in each category. And a column next to that that shows requested positions. And um for the first time in a long time, that one's not lower or the same. Um where you see a less than one whole person, that is not um a part-time person. That is a full-time person who's.
Go for it.
So for example, the department head half for the library, half for recreation. And um we have an administrative assistant also who's a quarter for the library. Um position restoration is hopefully gonna be part of this upcoming budget. And we have requested um the restoration of one librarian, two physician, which was eliminated in the fourteen fifteen budget. One library assistant. One two position that was eliminated in the twelve thirteen budget. And one library assistant position that was frozen way back in eleven twelve. Um and then finally eliminated in the nineteen twenty budget. And we're extremely excited about this. I'm I'm very enthusiastic. I hope I hope that this comes to pass and this was definitely. Um obviously, something that this this group has been advocating strongly for for quite some time. Um and on the next slide, you can see what the impact of restoring those positions will be. You have. Pre-pandemic hours at the top. And then you have um with restored positions, what we'll be able to offer. So Bay Shore going from just sixteen hours. Two days a week to thirty hours, five days a week. John Daly from twenty-two, three days a week to thirty-four hours, five days a week as well, so. We are optimistic that um we will once again be able to provide a more complete suite of of library services in those neighborhoods. Um so that that is an exciting proposition, though the rest of it's maybe less interesting.
Oh, Sheila, can I jump in and just say something here? Um this is such a big deal for us to make this request to the city council and just so you all know what the timeline is. Uh May twenty-fourth at the regular city council meeting, we will present the new fiscal year budget. And we might have to spill over into the next meeting in June as well, but that May twenty-fourth meeting will be the the bulk of the presentation and discussion. Um and just so you know, the city council also really values restoration of library recreation services. And it came up as the, it was tied, but it was number four uh top priority at their uh city council priority setting retreat earlier this year, so. We think we're in a really good position right now to do this, especially with the passage of Measure Q, the Daly City Local Recovery and Relief Measure, that half-cent sales tax. That's the money that will be used to fund this restoration and I mean, how amazing is it to go back to really twenty-ten? Um levels with in terms of hours at the library, so. Exciting stuff. I thought you guys would really enjoy this news.
It's amazing. Oh, my God, I was not expecting this. I mean, it'd be sorry if I. Because uh for as long as I've been on this board, um I've been on this board since two thousand seventeen. Um this is my third year. Um and this has always been, you know, an area of opportunity, something that um prior board members were always so passionate of. Advocating for um and the current um board members are very passionate about as well. So um yeah, that's that's great. Um maybe we can join the meeting as well, take protected time to support you all. I'm pretty sure that would that would be very helpful. Um you know, even say a few words as well. So thank you, thank you so much. Yeah, I'll let you continue.
Um. I have a question. Also, I don't know if you saw my tears, my virtual tears, but this is so beautiful to see libraries. Are going to be open five days a week. Um and I think what I would just wanna affirm too, like to see them open on days when we know young people are like. And are going to be out and about and go back to school. Um I think it's like super important. I just had a quick question. You had, I think I just got a little confused, but you had mentioned that um. One of the newer positions is gonna be split between library and rec. Did I hear that right and can you just?
Oh, no, I um on the um previous chart, there there are, um well, there's the director position, which is half and half. And then we have an admin assistant, so they're existing positions that are just budgetarily, they're split. Now, these are, these are three library positions and and they're they're, yeah, core important parts of the library and would would enable us to be. To have a, you know, really strong, robust library services in that area. We're very excited.
Thank you for clarifying.
Anything further on this? In addition to our full-time people, um we also have um hourly staff. Um some of them have been with us for for years and years and years and a lot of them are students who, you know, are looking for a job while they're in college. Um we have um five different categories of 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 hourly staff and. We, you know, obviously over the course of the pandemic, we've not been open and so um, you know, people have, a lot of people have moved on. So we are actually currently um looking to hire library aides, so if you know someone is looking for a really fulfilling part-time job and has great availability. Um please send them to Cal Ops to apply. Um this just kind of gives you an overview um of the number of hours. Um the number of hours that each person works varies based largely on their availability and then, of course, when we need people. Uh so hourly staff is an important part of our personnel budget as well. Um the fixed internal charges I mentioned are just these mysterious charges that are calculated by the finance department to help cover the costs. Of services that are provided to the library by other departments, so most importantly, you know, city I T, they they. Um maintain our network, well, they maintain the city portion of the network, um hardware, um own copiers. Um there's something called self-insurance, um custodial, that's probably one of the more significant ones, and of course, building repair. And then we do have inter-office passengers, so those kinds of of municipal things. Um those costs are shared amongst all the departments and so they're just charged to our um our budget. And it's um it's not a tiny amount. Uh last year it was uh eight eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Supplies and services is kind of a catch-all category. Um the big part of that is the contractual services. Um and so these these are um costs often associated with um being a member of the P L S consortium. Which is so valuable to us. Um so we have I T on that end as well. Um our shared catalog and we get our internet and E-rate. Um because we're a member of a consortium, we get a ha- a fifty percent discount on that through E-rate. And then we have um other, you know, agreements that we have for things like our room reservation software or cataloging software, those sorts of. Um unglamorous things. Um we also pay our utilities um out of this budget. Um and then you've seen um Cole Johnson come and provide um a number of presentations on our eBooks, our e-video. Um our research databases, so that that would be the um public databases and e-references budget. And then the miscellaneous or the um, oh, and then the collections would would be the final thing, which is books, B V Ds, magazines, newspapers. Um physical things that go into the collection and are checked out. And then it's it looks like a little slice. Um programs obviously is an important part of what we do. This is just the supplies for that, so. Um we have a a kind of a a set amount that we have dedicated for program supplies of nine thousand dollars each year. Um but we do, it increases as we get grants. Um we get grants. Thelma Goldrider Charitable Trust um generously provides us with a grant and of course, these fillet has provided a number of amazing grants. We also, um I think Sarah's talked about this, um have those in-kind things that come from the Measure Eight funded. Um summer learning program, so there is a pallet of paperback books sitting outside my office right now and that is something that comes. Um from that funding as well, so. They do good things and that covers all of the categories of the budget. And um as uh Stephen mentioned, the council is going to be reviewing the proposed city budget, May twenty-fourth. We are on a fiscal year, so our Happy New Year Day is July first and when we have a fresh budget start. So um do you have feedback for us?
Thank you, Chelsea. Thank you, Stephen. Um. I wanna say that I wanna wait and see how the role in the reopening. And see how it goes and um. Hopefully that that the budget sort of allo- the all the allocations for the budget will be able to. Um sincerely in any departments and in any parts that it's needed. Otherwise, thank you so much for this presentation. Well-prepared.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much. Um I know we've all expressed our, you know, excitement and appreciation, but looking forward to May twenty-fourth. When um the budget gets reviewed and um, you know, trustee members, I would encourage you all to attend. I'm really gonna try my best to block out time so that I can go and attend and support um Sheila, Stephen and the libraries.
I wanna express my gratitude to the to the city council for for prioritizing us in this way, so. It's a good thing.
It's a wonderful thing. Um any other additional comments or um? Questions from trustee Santos, trustee Dos?
Um Chela, when you had like the the sheet with the number of hours, um why was the youth services number so low? Um what's covered? Cause I also see like so many folks are doing all of that.
Um let's see, is that, no, oh, that was.
Is that one that was like the nine hours a week for youth service? I think it was slide eleven.
Yes. Um so and in fact, that position is currently vacant. Um that is a recreator for. Um cause we wanted to get somebody um, you know, a at that level to be able to support youth services. It's actually nine average hours. It's much higher during the summer. Um this person um helps with um summer learning primarily. But also um is kind of backup for storytime. Um we do have a our full-time staff support um a lot of programming for kids, so this person is dedicated to that. Um for these nine hours, but a lot of the pu- yeah, a lot of the full-time staff you'll see putting time into providing services to youth. Cause that is, that is a huge priority for us.
Yeah, thank you for, you know, sharing about the budget. I'm also excited for um for all of this and um. Is there like a a job posting about like the library aides on the on the website? Okay.
Uh I guess I believe it should, it should be on the website. Um and it uh we, it's a city job. Um so it goes through the Cal Ops website. There's an online application process. Um so definitely if you know anyone who's interested, it's it's a nice job. But I aides aides really are um a huge um boon to what we're able to provide in terms of providing um circulation at the desk. And just making sure there's always a staff presence. Um but the other people are kind of more specialized work. Um so the the aid position is really important for us and we love our aides and frequently they graduate and move on to bigger and better things in their chosen field. And we're happy for them, but then we need to hire new people, so. I think, I believe that um we we did a Instagram post about it recently too, so I'll I'll ask to have that reposted.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Angela, you're muted.
Hi. Um, no, thank you so much. Thank you for that overview. It was extremely helpful. And before I turn it over to Victoria, um, I wanted to say congratulations to Victoria, to D C P L A, to the city of Daly City. We have, um, a twenty twenty-one Daly City Youth Poet Laureate, Madeline Herr. Is it Madeline or Madeline?
Madeline.
Madeline and a first runner-up, Jacent Marcelino. It was a wonderful program. Um, I was, um, telling Victoria I wanted all of them to win. But, um, you know, we're so proud of our youth poet laureate, the program. And there's going to be a lot of great things that happen in the future because of this. So, um, wanted to give a shout out and congratulations.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I, we were really pleased with how it turned out. I think we had a pretty good turnout. I haven't actually counted up the, the hits on the various platforms that we were streaming it on yet. But, um, if anybody didn't miss it, it's, the video is still available to watch on YouTube, on our YouTube channel. If you just search for Daly City Public Library Associates or on Facebook Live, on our Facebook page, or also on our website, D C P L A dot org. We're going to leave it up there for a while. So, um, if you want to watch the show, you still can. And yes, of course, we have our, finally have our Daly City Youth Poet Laureate, Madeline Herr. We are very excited and proud of her. She's amazing. As well as our first runner-up, Jacent Marcelino, she's also, I mean, all of the students were fantastic. It's a shame that there could only be just one, but there, you know, I let them all know that there are still plenty of opportunities to participate in community events. And, um, right away I was approached by Daly City Library and Recreation Services and asked if we would collaborate with them as, along with the Peninsula Family Service and some other San Mateo County. Yes, sorry, Tim.
Oh, I was gonna say, I, I actually have the, um, I have the flyer. Let me share that.
Yeah, if you don't mind putting that up, I was actually gonna ask you about that. So, um, yeah, so we're gonna do an event on April twenty seventh, uh, from four to five P M. It's going to be a virtual event. And, um, they approached me and asked if I could invite our Daly City Youth Poet Laureate finalists to come. And I'm happy to say that both Madeline and several of the other finalists will be at this event. And the point of this was to be an intergenerational community gathering. So, um, we have, you know, seniors and actually people of all ages. We were kind of seeing it as some senior groups and then this youth component. But, um, I think people of any ages age are invited to come and just share some poetry. I believe there might be some, some people might be actually doing some, some singing performances, you know, some musical performances. Um, it's in honor of National Poetry Month, but of course, singing and, you know, that's poetry to music. So, you know, we already have an opportunity for people to see the, you know, the youth poet laureate finalists a little more. So hopefully they will continue to be active in the community. That was why they were part of the competition in the first place. Because again, it wasn't just for poets, it was also for community activists. They were, they were judged on both their poetry skills and their community activism. So we expect to see a lot more from these delightful youth. And I hope that you guys can all come to our Words That Heal event.
So it's next, um, Tuesday, e- uh, early evening via Zoom. Um, it's also going to be live streamed.
Yes, we'll, we'll be advertising that on our social media. I'm sure the library will be and the recreation. And, um, you know, if, if the library board of trustees would like to help us promote that, what, that would be awesome. Cause we would love to have a great turnout for that event.
And yes, it's going to be a cool program. Yeah, there's going to be non-agenarians and teenagers. A whole gamut.
Yes, I'll definitely look forward to promoting that and, um, I plan on attending as well.
Yes, thank you, Angela.
Oh, and, um, uh, uh, if you look at the, actually, I think the thing you're showing isn't the same flyer I'm looking at. But our San Mateo County Poet Laureate, Eileen Casanetto, who is also a D C P L A board member, will also be there along with, um, Roberta Gonzalez Gregg, Robert, Barbara, sorry, Campitelli. So some other, some other poets and then Madeline, of course.
It's like a, a great group of, of organizations and individuals. I'm excited.
Me too.
Very, very exciting.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah, I appreciate like the intergenerational, um, event. And I think it's a, it's a good way to end, you know, National Poetry Month. And I think there's a, there's a lot that's been happening, especially like the past month with, um, like a lot of like police brutality, um, killings of black and brown, um, brown people. And I think, um, you know, like gathering together, especially intergenerationally, that's like what our ancestors did. And so I appreciate that we're honoring like the present and then also honoring, um, generations of, of folks.
Hi. Ms. Victoria, I wanted to thank you so much for the, that's the event. The poet. Um, our Pacific Islands together. Finally, they gave me the approval the last minute. And it was last week before, um, we did the, before I submit for sponsors. So we are in full term when, um, for, for to supporting the D C P L A. And, um, that arrangement, maybe I'll get back to you offline to see how we can, um, maybe to, um, connect with you and figure out how we make that happen.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to send y'all affirmation that that event was really beautiful. And I just want to highlight, like, my favorite thing was that most of it was really held by the young people. Um, and I think this really uplifted, just like the storytelling, the creativity, and then the spotlight you all had on, on the different high school groups. Just super amazing. And I, yeah, it was just beautiful. Cause I think for me, like a lot of this library work really, like this advocacy really stems from, I think the role that libraries have in people's lives and the role that storytelling has. And I think you all did a wonderful job just entering in. Yeah, I, I hope you all were able to get some donations too. And definitely motivated me to continue boosting the work that you all are doing to generate funding.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Victoria. Yeah. And then, you know, I'd say continuous advocating for D C P L A is something that, you know, we'll continue to do. Because you just do so many great things for the community. It's not just fundraising, but creating, um, events that are unprecedented, right? It's never been, never happened before. Um, and so, you know, we really truly appreciate it. Um, all right, we are a little over in time. Um, are there any other announcements and communications? Nope, we covered a lot. And then for agenda building for, um, our next meeting, um, we can definitely think of the survey that, um, just been brought up and some of the topics or even questions that we'd like to see on that survey. Okay. Um, and also, um, a possible date for collaborating again, now that we have had the opportunity to, um, go over what the budget is, to see how we can further support, um, the libraries. Maybe our focus shift is different now that, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll see, right? But maybe we can do that. And then also, um, I know something, um, on our agenda was seeing how we could collaborate with other boards. So that can be a topic that we talk about next meeting as well. Let me go around and see if you had any other additional items that you wanted to add, uh, trustee Santos.
No, no additional items. I think not for this next meeting, but something I do want us to discuss as a next step at the next meeting is revisiting the policies as we.
I'm so, I'm sorry, I missed it.
Um, I think it's more like a next, next step. Maybe I'll just raise it at when we meet again, but not for the, the March, the May meeting. But I think just like.
All right. And what about trustee Dos?
Um, I agree with revisiting the policies.
And vice president, Paul Paul.
I, I wanted to see how soon we're going to fill out that seat, that empty seat. And, um, yeah, that's what, because, you know, when most of us are not attending or, you know, with uncontrolling situations, then, you know, maybe having that chair filled was sort of helped out. But, um, again, like with the rest of my, um, with the rest of the, uh, my colleagues, I think revisiting the policies and, um, so see where, what we can do from there. Thank you.
So Stephen, um, just really quickly, how does that work? So let's say we identify somebody that would be a good candidate, right? For a, um, you know, fellow trustee member, do we bring that, recommend that candidate to somebody at city council, like informally? And then, because they have to be appointed, correct? Yeah.
Correct. And actually, there's an application process. So, um, what you should really do is if you found someone, encourage them to submit an application. And then that starts our process with notifying city council that we have interest. And then they can consider that person for appointment. Um, and Shayla can send you the, the link so you all have it to the, um, online application.
Yeah, so I think that that's something, you know, um, trustees that we could probably do is talk to, you know, um, uh, colleagues, um, friends, family, people that are, you know, wanting to get involved in the community. I'm pretty sure, you know, we wouldn't have joined this board if we weren't passionate about community. So, um, as you're out and about, you know, look for potential candidates. And I, I really think that that's the best way to advocate for, um, somebody that comes in because they'll already have a, you know, personal connection with, um, one of us. And, you know, we could mentor them, you know, it'd be, it'd be good if it was somebody, you know, as active as we are, right? Who speaks at the meetings and, um, really wanting to be involved, make change or, um, improve, right? So thank you. Thank you, Stephen. All right. So, um, after all of that, um, if there are no, is there any public comment? No, I don't think so. All right. Um, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you next month. And as always, stay safe. Bye-bye now.
Bye.